To address the council, up to the podium, seeing none. We do have our closed session and we have an addendum also to the closed session.
Correct, Mayor Cabralis. We have the two items on the regular agenda. The first item is pursuant to government code 54956.8. It is real property negotiations. The property is described on the agenda along with the negotiating parties. Second item is government code, closed session, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9B3A. Again, this is a potential litigation. The third is on the addendum and it is for the benefit of the airport authority and it is pending, sorry, anticipated litigation, also pursuant to government code 54956 subsection C. 54956.9, sorry, subsection C. To the extent there's any reportable action on any of these items, we will come out and report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately prior to the resumption of the subsequent meeting.
City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We did have a closed session and our attorney will give a report on that.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. We did have a closed session. With respect to item number two, there is reportable action. It dealt with property negotiations between John Gargan and Caltrans for APN number 047316, sorry, 16302. The council unanimously agreed to sell a very small portion of property, 52 square feet, and lease another 152 square feet for a period of 45 years to Caltrans for the compensation of $1,000.
Thank you. We'll start the meeting with an invocation that will be given by Father Mark Glander from the Holy Innocents Catholic Church and will be followed by the pledge of allegiance by our assistant police chief, Lieutenant Greg Herbert.
Begin the prayer this evening with some verses from Matthew's Gospel. Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted; blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth; blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be satisfied; blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy; blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God; blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God; blessed are those who are persecuted for the righteousness sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. We ask God's blessing upon those who meet tonight, that you will give them wisdom, humility, and diligence, justice, and mercy. Amen.
Public, for which is saying? We do have several presentations, so I will vacate the podium and go out to the front The first presentations are for military banner presentation. And as you can see, we have these banners. And when we have servers, men or women, who are serving this country overseas in Afghanistan or Iraq, we do have a banner for them. When they get deployed, we put the banner up on the light standard. But we also have this ceremony like tonight where we present the banners and a certificate to the parents of the family of the soldiers or Marines or the Navy who are overseas. So tonight, we have, the first presentation is for Brian T. Curtis, United States Army. His mother Valerie will be accepting the certificate. Valerie? Valerie, we'll give you the certificate in recognition of the service of Brian T. Curtis. And we're very proud, as you are. And in this country, we're lucky that we still have young men and women that will get up one morning and go to the recruiting office and say, "I do." And that's, we're blessed with that. So on Brian's behalf, please accept this. And if you have a few words you want to say on behalf of your son?
Yes, real quick. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the City of Victorville and Mayor, okay, Mayor C., how about that? For this presentation. And we, Kevin and I, are very proud of our son, Brian, who made the decision on his own to go to recruited office. And we really thought he was joking. But he woke his father up one day and said, "Dad, let's go." So we're very proud. He's presently over in Afghanistan. I told him about the ceremony, so he's waiting to see pictures on Facebook.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Our next presentation is for Darrell Hernandez Jr., United States Marine Corps. His father Darrell Hernandez Senior will be accepting the certificate. Darrell? Let's go to the next and maybe he'll return. Weldon Strachan IV, United States Army. His wife Kimberly will be accepting the certificate. Kimberly? Again, on behalf of the city, please accept this certificate for Weldon. And we thank you and we thank him for his service.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the City of Victorville for putting on this program. My husband deployed to Iraq, serving with, sorry, the Third Infantry Division, and this means a lot to both of us. So, thank you.
Okay, now we can have Darrell accept on behalf of his son, Darrell Hernandez Jr., United States Marine Corps. Again, Darrell, please accept this from the City of Victorville for the service of your son. And if you would like to say a few words on his behalf?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Victorville City Council. Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Cox. I take extreme pride in being a father, a single father of two sons. And we had a lot of bumps and runs, my son and I. But I said, "If anything that I've taught you," remember these three components: pride, character, and discipline, which I live by and I expect my sons to. Being employed by the California Department of Corrections for approximately 23 years, they've raised me like it was paramilitary pride, character, and discipline. When I attended my son's graduation in November 2008, thank you, Jesus, mission accomplished. I want to thank the parents, verbally to single parents, because it's a tough task, especially these days. God bless our children and our sons and daughters, and God bless us all. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for the Rotarians. And let me be part of it here. Whereas Rotary Club of Victor Valley Sunrise in Victorville are proud to support the World Polio Day 2010 as a positive initiative to create awareness and educate the citizens of Victorville about the vital importance to eradicate polio worldwide. This proclamation is on behalf of the city. We have two Rotarians that will accept this, Don Brown, and we also have Teresa. Okay, here we go. What are you doing? On behalf of the city, we would like to present this proclamation to the Rotarians, and we would like to have you say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation. And due to the subject of polio eradication, this weekend, I wanted to announce that there is a free immunization clinic at Yoculoma School. And there will also be available the T-DAP, which is for the whooping cough, and even for adults, because there are some children that are getting whooping cough from adults, because adults can carry it. So you can get vaccinated against it so that you can prevent any deaths in children also. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Let's take a look.
Oh, my gosh.
First item on the agenda is a public comment, and this is for all the authorities as well as the City Council. You're limited to three minutes. I do have some cards. The first one is El Cotillo.
Yeah, I'm here to ask that we need a lot more police in this town. We need about probably 10 more cops. And my neighborhood is turning out to be a war zone. There were seven robberies in one night over there, people's houses are being broken into. The other night, eight gunshots went off, one police cruiser come out, and I felt bad for that cop. This guy's going behind people's backyards all by himself. Now, without any backup, without nothing. The helicopter was flying over, but that's easy to hide from. And this town is getting out of control. They broke into my car the other night, but they just got the door open, because I can hear everything at night. I'm a very light sleeper. And I got out with my underwear and shotgun, and they were gone. But this place, this place needs more cops. You spent $10 million on a golf course, you're putting the people who play golf ahead of the citizens of the City of Victorville. Your number-one job is to make sure we're safe. And by letting the cops go, you're not making us safe. And by the way, those cops, the other night, seven robberies in one night, when my neighbors went to report it to the police the next day, the police had already caught the people and had all their equipment and gave it back to them. With just not, with just the few cops they had, they did all that. But we need more cops in this town, or there's going to be a hell of a lot of trouble in this town. You're going to have people shooting each other on the streets pretty soon. It's getting that way. You got people selling, it's getting to look like Kewauna, hot tacos and stuff on the street. I mean, this place is looking ridiculous, you know? I try to keep our neighborhood nice and looking good, and you get these Section 8 people moving, and they live like pigs. I don't know.
Hold it.
Oh, my time is up.
Your time's up.
Yeah. Now, one thing I want to say, you know, these kids that are all crooks, you know why? You're their mentors. And when they're supposed to be looking up to you.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
And when they see what you guys are doing, they say, "The hell with it, we might as well be crooked."
Next is Norman Miller.
You got it all, didn't you? Mayor, council members, I have a question. I noticed there's some council and staff missing tonight. I'm wondering if they're on trips or anything like that, that I thought we were going to cut down on, because I hear there's still trips being made by different people. So I'm just curious about that. Another item is, I've made about three or four calls to the hotline for the graffiti, and we've got some graffiti on Sycamore between Amethyst and Cobalt. And it's been there for about a month. With the three or four phone calls, it's not been removed. I was just wondering if maybe somebody could look into that. There's more graffiti there than that. The worst of it is from Victorville's city limits on 395 to Bear Valley Road. On the east side of 395, almost every single sign and telephone has graffiti on it. And I know this is 395. I don't know if the city takes care of that or not, but it would be nice if they did, because there's a lot of signs that are not government signs that need to be covered. And the other thing is, looks like there's some dirty politics going on, because some of the signs are being removed for the candidates. Some of them are being covered up with other signs. And I just, I hate to see this happening, but maybe there's something that somebody can do about that, because it shouldn't happen this way. We need a good, clean government, and I think we're having some problems already. Thank you.
Thank you.
City council members, I'm a resident of the High Desert Community, employed by a small company based in the City of Victorville. I've stood by my employers through many economic hardships. If not for the community or neighboring cities of the High Desert, my employers would have closed their doors years ago. I've seen many companies come and go relying on the community to employ them. So I ask you why a local business working to improve and maintain this city was replaced with a company associated, or not associated with, our community. Will the check you write them benefit our community? Will they greet you with a smile in the grocery store or at a community event? Will they care about the work that they've done driving to their community with a check in hand? These are areas in which my employer, my company, and respectable members reside in. Now, if you don't recognize me, I'm sure at some point or another we've seen one another, whether working in the office, in the field, or meeting in networking or social branches. I'm sure the employment from the company that was dismissed produced homeowners, taxpayers, and voters. Now, while looking over the expense reports, wire transfers the City Council must approve on, I believe you're faced with important decisions. These decisions must be examined, studied, and validated so that the city officials are making just decisions. Well, that starts here and now. The City of Victorville EDD uses a key phrase, "The world of opportunity." Informing others that living here and working here will offer great opportunities. That's great. Competition in the High Desert means more businesses. City officials and council members, you know this. You've seen their names come across these agendas every meeting. So if every council member can agree to say, "We need to keep our businesses in the High Desert," then let's do it now. Do the research and employ those who employ us. Let's keep the money in the desert. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Curtis.
Good evening. I just wanted to come up here, Mr. Mayor, and say thank you once again to you and to the City Council for the lovely banner for my son, and also to thank you for the wonderful job that you are, I know in some way, responsible for, for the Bear Valley parking ride. Looks great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any more cards for item number one, which is a public comment. So is there anyone else that would like to address the city? If you do, you have to fill out one of these cards and give it to our clerk. If you're with the group, fill out one of these cards and please give it to the clerk.
I believe they're speaking on item number 10.
On 10? Okay. When we get to item 10, then we'll cover, I have three cards for you, okay? Thank you. The first agenda is the Library Board of Trustees. And we don't have any revisions, but we do have a consent calendar.
Move approval?
Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. We also have the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. And Councilman Caldwell is the chair for the authorities, and he'll conduct that meeting. Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. As to the rail authority, there are no revisions or additions that I'm aware of. With that, the only item is item three, the consent calendar. A motion would be in order.
Move.
As to the airport authority, there is a revision to item five, which we'll get to in a minute. Item three is consent calendar. A motion would be in order. Item four is request to approve the second amendment to the easement for the right-of-way for the Kinder Morgan Nevada Pipeline. Motion would be in order.
Move.
Item five is a request to adopt proposed resolution SCLA-A-10-004, which if approved, would approve the Fourth Amendment and restated master agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Sterling Capital Investments LLC. I'll ask the city attorney to please comment briefly on the revisions to the proposed document.
Thank you, Chairman Caldwell. There are on the dais revisions to the document based on final negotiations between ourselves and Sterling. You have before you redlined version that shows the changes requested by Sterling. There are two unfortunate typographical errors that I want to bring to your attention. In section 202 Roman V, there's a reference to the PVT and the EDC parcels. That should just be deleted. And in section 11.02, in the last paragraph, there's a reference to $10 million. That number should read $5 million. But with that, you have a staff report that spells out the transaction. We'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order with regard to proposed resolution SCLA-A-10-004.
Move approval?
Item six is a request to accept the Airport Improvement Program grant from the FAA in the amount of $2,617,414, and to amend the budget for an additional $117,414. Appropriate an additional sum of $172,436, and award a construction contract for SCLA Taxiway C. and High-Speed Exit Reconstruction in the amount of $2,278,332 to Vance Corporation. Questions or comments from members of the authority? Not a motion would be in order.
Move.
That concludes the airport authority agenda. Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Mayor Cabralis, excuse me, may I get a vote on that last item?
Okay, there we go. Next agenda is the RDA. There are no revisions. We have a consent calendar.
Move approval?
Next is the Joint Powers Financing Authority. No revisions. We have a consent calendar. Item three.
Move.
Next is the Water District. We don't have any revisions. We have a consent calendar. A motion for approval? We have item number four. This is a request to approve an annual purchase order, request for Infinity National Services in the amount of $35,000. Item number five is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $2,092.37. This is also a companion item to City Council item number 12. So we'll take, we'll vote on both of them at this time.
Approval?
Item number six, request to approve a change order for Aaron's Corporation, and this is for the amount of $6,860. As companion item to Council item number 13.
For approval?
Item seven, request to approve a change order, Panorama General Engineering Contract, and this is in the amount of $10,452.50. Companion item to City Council item number 14.
Move approval?
Item number eight, request to approve change order to the cash grading contractors contract. This is in the amount of $28,348.38. Companion item to Council item number 15. This is in the amount of $28,348.38. Companion item to Council, item number 15.
Move approval? Second.
Item number nine, request to approve change orders to the Moore Metals Corporation. This is in the amount of $59,884. Companion item, Council item number 16.
Approval? Second.
Next, we have the City Council agenda. We... Item number three, we do have some revisions. We'll continue with item number three. This is a continued appeal hearing, and I understand it's been withdrawn.
Yes, the appellant has withdrawn his appeal, so there is no need to conduct the hearing.
Now, I did open the public hearing at the last meeting.
That's correct. And now, the appeal has been withdrawn.
So we don't have to take any action?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Is there a formality probably appropriate to vote to just close the public hearing? Just put a finale to it?
Okay. There was a continued public hearing on item number three. The public hearing, because the appeal has been withdrawn, is now closed. Item number four. Item number four is... let's see. This is a request to continue the item to November the 16th. And also, we'll have to take item number...
Item number six.
Continue that. But I will open up the public hearing at this time on item number four. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing. Item number four and number six will be continued.
Technically, you're not closing the public hearing. You're just going to keep it open and continue.
Keep it open, and it will continue on November the 16th. Item number five, consent calendar.
Move approval? Second.
Item number six is continued to November the 16th. Item number seven is a request to adopt resolution number 10-081, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, State of California, adopting the Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Program.
Move approval? Second.
Item number eight, request to approve a five-year lease of 66 new golf carts from Clubcar for fiscal year 2010-2011 for an additional appropriation amount of $1,714.56.
Move approval? Second.
Item number nine is a request to award a contract to MTGL to perform quality assurance for the Taxiway C and High Speed Exit project in the amount of $34,685.
Move approval? Second.
Item number 10 is a request to award an eight-month contract to Jay Martinez Landscaping Services for landscaping maintenance services for a 10-member landscaping crew, project BM11-010, for an amount not to exceed $125,000. There is additional information on this item?
Yes, there is a letter that has been submitted by Lawn Care Landscaping, and I believe there are representatives here to speak on the item.
Okay. I do have three cards on item 10. And let's see, it's Rebecca Rimbaugh. First one.
Good evening. Even though I wasn't planning to speak first tonight, there'll be more in Dean tell what my conversation has to say with what's going on. But to start, I would like to say hello. My name is Rebecca Rimbach, and I am employed with Lawn Care Landscaping of High Desert Gardens. First, I would like to begin with a quote, a quote by you, Mayor Rudy Cabrealis, began, quote, "Please know the City Council is committed to securing a variety of new jobs, creating business-friendly environment, and providing housing opportunities for all our citizens," end quote. I agree, but unfortunately, not all your city departments do. The city's Public Works Department did just the complete opposite. They terminated my company with less than two weeks' notice, didn't hire back any of their employees they laid off, and to top it off, hired a company off the hill that we didn't even get a chance to bid on. Members of the council, this does not sound like securing jobs or helping out any of our citizens of the desert. Here tonight is only a miniscule of amount of people affected by what Public Works Department thought was in the best interest for our city. A manager of Public Works, Doug Matthews, simply explained to me that competition is important, didn't hire any of the lawn care companies from the high desert because none of them were properly qualified to work for the City of Victorville. Well, I know at least one company that is qualified, a company that didn't receive that opportunity, a company that had been proudly serving the City of Victorville for multiple of years, a proud company to employ citizens of Victorville whom in turn put back into our community. Members, I please ask you to look into the eyes of the majority of the audience tonight. Here are the eyes of your taxpayers, of our voters, and the citizens who make it possible and stimulate our city's economy. These are the people who make it possible for people like Mr. Doug Matthews in Public Works to have a job. We are the people who put trust into our fellow city workers to do the right thing. Without us, there would be no you. I'm asking members of City Council not to take this situation lightly and to educate yourselves about the issues taking place, the issues that stand for the complete opposite of what the City of Victorville represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Frank Rimbaugh. Frank Rimbaugh?
Good evening, City Council. This is probably the first time we've ever met. My name is Frank Rimbach. I own High Desert Gardens, also Lawn Care Landscaping. Basically, we've been the company for the last 10 years of taking care of your landscape, maintenance, and district districts, better known as LMADs and a couple of DFAS. 10 years. Basically, within a short time, we were basically put out and our whole world was basically taken away from us without our knowledge, more or less, what happened. So I'm just going to focus on two points right now because I'd like this agenda and put on agenda and get the right parties in a room to discuss this thoroughly, because right now, it is a time-sensitive issue. And as anyone who's lived up in the high desert long enough, Mr. Caldwell, I think you've lived up here quite a while. Rudy, I know you have. We all know landscaping up here isn't like down off the hill or anywhere else, and it shouldn't be taken lightly. Number one, the LMADs were moved out of parks and wrecked. Why? There is nobody in Public Works, and I mean zero, who has any idea of horticulture, botany, plant ID, irrigation technician, soil analysis, soil technician, irrigation, irrigation controllers, and so on. The list really does go on. I don't have enough time to name everything that you would need to know to take care of our LMADs. But yet, it was taken out of parks and wrecked where those people know about this and put in Public Works, where those people have zero idea. And I know this for a fact they had zero idea because I was basically told that... basically, I was being blackmailed and tried to be intimidated to basically teach Public Works, these LMADs, teach horticulture, because that's what they're asking, not just drive them around and show them all the areas. Because as we all know, our city has grown quite a bit in the last five or six years. We had an explosion. I've been landscaping up here for 26 years as a contractor. Again, 10 of them taking care of the city and all these LMADs that go with them. Some of these LMADs go back 20 to 25 years before there were true specs in order. Now that we have real specs, we get better planners, better watering, so on and so on. But still, nobody in Public Works knows this. They don't know... they don't know a newanamis from a potinia. They don't know a rainbird from a taro. And the reason they don't... I know this is because they kept asking me. Well, Public Works...
You have 30 seconds.
If Public Works, if you're going to take over a department, then you should know everything about it before you say yes to that. I need more than three minutes, sir. I'd like to put this on the agenda and have this looked at.
You have three minutes. You have 15 seconds left, sir.
Number two is the way I was treated by Public Works. They disrespected me. They tried to intimidate me. They tried to blackmail me. And when I didn't go along with what they wanted, they basically told me that I would not be allowed to bid or work anymore, basically, for the city.
Your time's up, sir.
I didn't bid this job. I wasn't allowed to bid this job. Someone put a number in there.
Your time's up.
And, all right, thank you.
Next is Ron Griffin.
Can I get this... can I get this on the agenda? Mr. Crawford, can I get this on an agenda so I can have more time?
It's on the agenda tonight. We're going to speak... we're going to speak to this item tonight.
Okay. Because there's more parties. We need people who were in parks and wrecked. There's the people who know.
Sir, your time's up.
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to present a different aspect of this issue. My name is Ron Griffin. I'm a broker and investor, and I have a number of properties in the high desert. Some of those properties are in the areas that are served by... whatever formerly served by land care... lawn care landscaping. And just like you, I have vested interest in making sure that we have aesthetically pleasing surroundings and economic prosperity in this area. I can tell you already that even in the short period of time since the discontinuance of this vendor, we already see a difference in an area. There was a gentleman in the back there that was talking about the differences in... around amethyst and cobalt, which is where my property is. And so, you know, obviously, I have economic interest in that. But I think the thing that concerns me more is that with all the capable businesses that we have in this area, that my understanding is that this contract was awarded to a group that don't live in our community. And I just wanted to have some explanation of the rationale behind that decision, if you do have one, to explain that, because obviously, that's in none of our best interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, is there any staff comments on...
I would like to make just one quick comment. The bid amount listed for Jay Martinez Landscaping Services, which is the recommended vendor, is approximately... well, the Lawn Care bid listed on your agenda item is approximately 40% higher. We do have a local vendor preference...
You cannot make any comment from the audience. Please.
We do have a local vendor preference ordinance in place that was put in place by this council. That is a 5% allowance, and clearly, the 40% is higher. The next highest bidder is at $180, which is approximately 20% higher, I believe, if my math is correct. This contract is actually for just the remainder of this fiscal year so that a more thorough bid and bid spec can be developed by the department in order to do a more thorough bid and get hopefully even better bids the next time.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions, but I have comments at the appropriate time.
The only thing I have is they weren't notified ahead of time before this was done.
Actually, I would ask Amherjaker, our Director of Public Works, to come up and respond to that question. Councilman Norman.
Mayor, council member, we notified them and we terminated their agreement. We did not have a contract with the Lawn Care. We basically had a letter agreement, which was modified over the years, and the amount stood at $57,000 in September. Our Public Works contract code allows us a certain amount of... there's a dollar amount set aside for each either city director, city manager, city council that can be awarded on an informal basis. The amount of the contract exceeded that amount, and it required us to go out to bid. That meant that we have to prepare specs. The first step was to terminate the agreement. The second step was to obtain interim contract, and what we did is we went with the highest amount possible, which is $125,000. That can be awarded informally. My belief is that Lawn Care was contacted, and this is the price that they submitted. Most of the bidding is performed by our finance department. They're in charge of doing that, and they contact the vendors according to their rules. This is just an interim solution. What we would like is a long-term contract with anybody who would bid, provide a good bid. But the specs will take a little longer because there's a lot of new LMADs that have come on recently. The areas that we're looking at, some of the LMADs that we have do not have funding or do not have escalators, so we have funding issues. But what we would like to do is take the time, two, three, four months, and come back with a very sound specs that we can put out to bid for next year. This contract, as you can see, $125,000 is only two months of what... a little over two months of what Lawn Care was charging us. And that's because city staff will have to put in and maintain the areas in the interim until we are able to put this out to bid, and Lawn Care will be... we have never told Lawn Care that they will not be allowed to bid. They will be allowed to bid on the project. We have nothing in our code that allows us to stop somebody from Lawn Care from bidding on a project. And the project, once it's out to bid, it's a very simple contract process, and whoever is the lowest responsible... responsive bidder will get the job.
So this is just an interim?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It would be my recommendation that we continue this item till November 16th. I'm aware of High Desert Gardens. They've been around for a long time. They've got an excellent reputation. I just received on the dais tonight a multi-page letter with serious accusations. I have had no opportunity to do any research or due diligence. The staff, I doubt, seriously is in a position tonight to respond to six pages of allegations. I think it's too important. Every one of us on this dais has said that we're going to do everything we can to keep jobs locally. Now, whether that will work in this instance or not, only time will tell. I'm not prepared to vote on this agenda item tonight, and I think that... I think that the allegations that are raised are of sufficient importance at two weeks so the staff can address them is not unreasonable. We have plenty of rain tonight. Nothing's going to dry up and blow away in the next two weeks, so... or four weeks. So my... I requested the councils this item be continued to the next regularly scheduled council meeting where we'll be able to do substantive business that gives everybody a chance to address these issues.
Well, and I agree. Those allegations are serious, and they have to be responded. And staff will have that opportunity to do that, and... Please. We cannot let allegations go unanswered. They need to be answered, and they will be. And so they'll be carried over to the... They need to be answered, and they will be, and so they'll be carried over to the 16th of November. Item number 11. This is a request to approve amendment number one to the Venom contract for construction of management of the SRA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant for $5,000, $536,165.10.
Move approval?
We have, we did item number 12, 13, 14, 15, and 15. So we're through with the items. Item number 17 is report for council members. Terry?
I have none. Go ahead.
I have none. I took care of it all in the back room.
Okay. Then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good.